Director Palmer, where'd you go? Okay.
Yeah, are you ready guys?
I am ready.
Okay, alright, um, can I call to the board here, the uh, May 14 Los Salivos Community Services District Regular Board Meeting? At uh, eight thirty, seven PM. Alright. Sorry, I'm sorry. So get the seven, eight thirty two PM.
Eight thirty two PM, okay.
Alright, so we're the roll call.
Uh, Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Parks?
Here.
Director Farren?
Here.
Birthday girl Kennedy?
Here.
Birthday girl Palmer? We'll be back shortly.
Right here.
Yeah.
Here, okay.
If we could everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
It's America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end to its end.
Okay, alright, so public comment, that opportunity if you'd like to address the board about.
Public comment, um, we have a taker, Park herself.
Good evening, everyone, uh, I always find those kind of workshops, it's kind of, they feel like crowd control when you kind of know information and your format is a, is a little tough to swallow when you, when you know the information, you can't do public comments, so maybe future once you get a public comments, so people can actually ask questions, we submitted some cards, they didn't get answered, so that whole process feels like county, your advocacy, but anyways, um, I just bring up a few things, I think, um, we're also, we're not working off great uh, numbers with the city of solving option where they're doing their planet grade, I think, obviously you've got some time before you can negotiate a true cost there with them spending eighteen million dollars on their upgrade. The Dunn School thing, uh, I think it's worth digging into that because what if there's a public private partnership where you can build a plant over there, uh, for a lot less than, uh, we're able to do on our own, I, I don't know, uh, if that's feasible, but I think it's worth looking at, um. I'm very scared about just the cost that people are gonna feel, and no matter what option we go with, the guy sitting next to me has looked here for fifty years, he said, I'm moving. So I think it's, we're dealing with such huge numbers for so many people that it's, it's a, it's a little concerning, um. And I just keep coming back to this, I don't know where this one, the level moved from ten to one, and I understand that's the regional board, which seems a little insane, when, when solving is currently putting eight out into the river. And we have to now go to one, when a whole chunk of our district is at two, we're having to go to, uh, where our groundwater is less than what the discharge is at solving. Salt Santa Barbara, they've had two major spills of a million gallons into the ocean, so that the, the kind of ironing here is just, uh, hits you right in the face, but, um. I just would encourage you to look at that testing data and is there any room for part of the district, if people choose to, to stay with status quo? Um, and be able to do a smaller system that addresses the small lots, that you can get grant funding to maybe pay for a larger chunk of it. I personally don't really, this, I, I really don't care which option we go with, I think the solving option may be a great option, uh, but it's, it's not like we can just we get, there's gotta be some tough negotiation there, uh, otherwise we could get taken advantage of, and I think you gotta do something, uh, to make sure that line can't get tapped in along the way, because that's the biggest issue with the solving option. And I don't think the future board changing their mind is acceptable, uh, for that option, anyways, there we go, thank you.
Alright, thank you, anyone else?
Number one, I want to thank you for your work, because I know that this isn't fun, so I really do appreciate it, on a side note. The thing I have, uh, an overall concern with is a few things, one, I know that this is a large budget, and we're three hundred and seventy unit, or three hundred and seventy lots, right, and my, my hope for you guys is to be, like Marco was pointing at, as creative as possible, because I, I want to contain a scenario picture for you. We have an aging population, we just do, and right now, people are selling their houses because they need a new roof, right, if they need a new roof, they're like, eh, it's better to sell it, I'll move. And we've seen an influx of a huge amount of people. If we're talking about our character of Los Salivos, which I think is the most important thing that we're really striving for, and we're figuring, we're a little town trying to figure out a very big problem. Having every single street within our town torn up for an undisclosed, undetermined period of time. Not only will that impact residents, but there's a reason people are getting into their car and driving a hundred and fifty miles every week to come up into Los Salivos. And if we have open trenches, we have things going on, that's one of the things we really, really have to think about, because right now, we are in a tough economic time. You know, wine faces a lot of headwinds, there's huge amounts of tasting rooms here, and when every single one of these tasting rooms or whatever is hit with a seven thousand dollar, uh, increase in their triple net lease. A lot of them are gonna fold or go somewhere else, and I'm just telling you flat out. If we do that, I know that we'll have a sewer, which will be great, but then again, right now, we have tasting rooms and we have this quaint little place because we don't have sewers. As soon as we do have sewer, every single one of these businesses can become whatever it wants to be, because we won't have those restrictions withholding how many, what types of businesses can go into there. We've done a really, really great job under the circumstances. The bigger piece of the pie to me is the fact that we're gonna have a bond of say fifty million dollars, it's gonna be seven thousand dollars a year in property tax increases, which is probably far more than I would say fifty percent of our residents are paying total property taxes whatsoever. As soon as they're hit with that, they're selling, they're moving. So my suggestion to all of us is this, uh, advanced wa- wastewater treatment system, we put three in, we actually pioneered it, we were, we had a project over here, state stop pause, we brought it to the county, we got it approved, Matty's used the same program. The advanced water treatment systems that are going in now are decreasing nitrogen, nitrogen levels by seventy to ninety percent. It's, uh, type twenty-two, which we, you're just talking about, uh, we haven't even gotten in the conversation about trenching every single house in Los Salivos out to the pipe, which every single person is gonna have to go absorb themselves. The difficulty that, that we, the headwinds that we are wanting to face, and I want to just give you a real world, not just numbers and bolts and where it's one in solving, this is how we're gonna fix the problem. We can fix the problem without the super. And we need to have that option, and as you are, am I done talking? You want me to be done, or you want to talk? So, in the big scheme of things, you have to take that on as a major consideration, major consideration. Because right now, if you bring this to any landowner, any property, anybody who wants anything in a downtown quarter, and you said, oh, we're gonna charge you guys more, because we're gonna charge everybody else a lot less. Every single one of those properties is gonna pass it on to somebody else, and that somebody else is he, isn't gonna probably be able to absorb it. And we're gonna have vacancies, we're gonna have openings, we're gonna have a lot, we're, we are going to push ourselves into a depression or recession within Los Salivos itself. And then we're in a bigger problem. So, when we're thinking through this.
Well, it has to be true, same.
Thank you.
Can you just give me more time? Catherine Roer is online.
We have Catherine, go ahead.
Hi, hi, I, um, can you hear me okay, I just, I wanted to note a couple things, um, I definitely agree, and, and I'm, what I never heard during the workshop that I'm hoping the board's gonna address at some point, is you've only got two wells. Immediately under the downtown core and the immediately adjacent small lots, phases one and two, that's the only place you've got wells exceeding the MCL. Why should two thirds of the population pay to finance that, I didn't hear it, that's cool, keep working on it, I think that message is gonna come across. Um, Supervisor Hartman read from the note card she had from the, from the plan for the San Andres Valley, but she left out this part, so I want it in the record. Extending an interceptor sewer connection from the city of solving or the Chumash Treatment Facility to serve Ballard and Los Salivos raises significant policy concerns and potential environmental impacts associated with extending urban services through agricultural lands. Comprehensive plan policies in the land use and agricultural elements, as well as LAFCO policies, on which Supervisor Hartman sits. discourage extending sewer service to rural areas because such extensions can encourage development intensification that is incompatible with agricultural areas. Sewer extension along the Alamo-Pintata Corridor would also be inconsistent with the community plan.
It got quiet, are you done, I'm sorry?
Well, I thought you were telling me to stop speaking. Did you tell me to stop speaking?
We weren't sure if you were.
Okay, so where did it drop, because I would really like to.
But when, when you said the last bit, it dropped off, we had a little trouble in the beginning, um, but.
And so I have one last question, um, you guys kept talking about searing the whole thing, and, um, and community members only paying for the benefit conferred. But you're, that, you gotta look in your agenda packet from last month, look at page thirty-three, the StanTech Plan, it explains what phases one, two, and three are, and StanTech wrote, on your dime. It is expected that properties in phases one and two are expected to be connected immediately after construction of the sewer collection system. Phase three properties are generally expected to be connected when their septic systems fail. And may take several years to be connected after the construction of the collection system. What in the holy name of the sweet rollerblading baby Jesus would motivate those people to pay to maintain their septic and pay for a sewer system to serve the downtown, you guys have to think this through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other, uh, public comment?
So, long story short, I came here twenty-five years ago, and you guys were battling this, that, so it's decades of just push off, push off, push off, way past. Uh, why should we have to pay for this, why should we have to pay for that, pick your poison, get over it, we gotta move on, and I'm tired of it. So, we're not gonna ever live long enough to see the benefits of what we're making decisions on today. So all I care about is what's best for the entirety of the community in long term. And that is gravity, is, and local, if we can partnership with Dunn. That makes sense, because we're not gonna shoot each other as neighbors, that we're not gonna take advantage of each other as neighbors. Yes, solving is an option as the last resort. Otherwise, yeah, we can't do local without Dunn's help, but I don't know enough information about that to know the, the decision on that. But local first with Dunn, solving second, because we can't do it on our own. And that's really it, we gotta get over and pass all this, how much it's gonna cost crap, and make a decision as a community.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comment?
Seeing that.
Okay, alright, we'll move on then to, next item on the agenda is, uh, General Manager brief district status report.
Yeah, so, uh, for the brief status report, the only thing I would comment on is, uh, GSI was in the community yesterday to do groundwater testing, um, you saw the results from the depth calculations, because they can provide those immediately, we will see the concentration numbers in about a month.
Um, any public comment? Alright, next item on the agenda is, um, the consent agenda, we'll take public comment first. Very none, okay, we get a motion on the consent agenda? Or actually, guys, do you have any comments before we, okay. Alright, we have a first and a second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Alright, all in favor, aye, opposed, wish it passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is, um, item seven, consideration of community workshop adopted project plan, uh, project description. Definition and or set of potential special meeting date of HPA.
Yeah, so, um, I put this on the agenda, because your board at the last meeting said, please agendize this, you weren't quite sure which direction you wanted to go. Um, so now you have a fully agendized option to talk about it, um. Uh, you can talk about project description, I don't think you're ready for that personally, based on people wanna think about it, and what I heard afterward, um, you can provide direction to staff to do things, um. Or my favorite option is, you select a date to have a specific meeting, and I would also recommend as your general manager, um, heavily that you use May twenty-eighth. Um, and have a singular focus meeting, no invoices, no minutes, nothing, just talk about this as a topic, uh, and see if you can drive toward, uh, some sort of project discussion, definition, that sort of thing, um. Hopefully by then, you know, we can, we can get whatever other questions people might have in, and be able to answer them very soon.
Oh, alright, did he, uh, public comment on this agenda, right? Mr. O'Neill.
Um, yeah, again, I would just, again, I think tonight, as it relates to this, uh. I think it's a bit of a sales pitch to the solving solution, is, uh, a lot of selling going on. Uh, and it may be fun, that may be the right solution, I don't, don't know the answer, um, but I get, I do know that, uh, that like I said before, there's, there's gotta be a lot of negotiations that go on, you gotta really understand that cost before we tell everybody that's cheaper. Because what if there is a done option, and maybe you got, maybe the community, all these folks over here deciding, no, I'm not really, it's, um, it's two over here, three or four. I'm not ready to spend, because I don't think they can force me until I get to ten, which is over here. Um, so if there's a solution that takes care of the problem, like the original plan that you guys adopted, uh, that Mr. O'Neill worked on. I just think we should, this community should have that option, in case it doesn't look like a boat's gonna go that way, and you able to get a smaller system over there for nine million dollars instead of nineteen million dollars, I just think it's, you gotta have options, and if solving knows you don't have any options, well, what do you know? Heard, I heard the Art of the Deal mentioned it, hell, well, what do you know, you gotta have options, or you're running into a razor, so, so. We, we, we worked this hard to get here, so these discussions could be happening in this room, I think I spent about a half a million dollars in studies, so that this community could make decisions with good information, and that tonight was a great step forward, but I just think you kinda gotta look at these other little bit of options, and don't go full bore with one option before you have a deal. Sorry, it's, just a little bit of business thinking, um, but anyways, a lot of good information, um, but I, I think you gotta know a little bit more on those options, maybe the done option makes no sense at all, I don't make it, but, they see many.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment, bringing back to the board?
None online, yeah.
Thank you. Right, um, so what, how does the board feeling about a special meeting to vote, or do we need more time, do we need more information of any sort? Anybody?
Well, I would, unless.
Oh, no, please.
So, thank you, um, I think, I'd like to see us take the May twenty-eighth meeting.
Can, can you guys go ahead and use some mic, it's kinda hard for, particularly for the people online, and some in the room, but, I can move that a little closer now. Oh, no, I can't.
I'd like to see us use the May twenty-eighth meeting to, um, have a discussion about the community feedback we've received tonight. I'm glad to see Dunn here, I have, at this stage. Interested in partnering with us, I'd like to see what further information or detail we can have on what that would look like, by May twenty-eighth, ideally. I'd like to hear from council then, what our options are, as far as if. And when we select a project description, how we might look at some of these other alternatives as part of our environmental review process. In the alternate section, so that we're studying, we've got a preferred, but we're not dead in the water on some of these other potential term changes. Um, and then coming back at the June meeting, to begin trying to work toward a project description that part of us can agree on, if, if we think we're ready to do that after May. So that's, that's my.
So, I mean, uh, I, I would agree, I think we should have, um, a, I, I'm a little bit um, of the mind that, um, you know, we kinda set a target that we were, we can keep going on this forever.
Yes.
And I'm very concerned about the, the Dunn, um, we haven't done a full feasibility on what Dunn is, I, I've heard they've said four or five acres are available, maybe by the twenty-eighth, um. Mr. Savage could come back with some sort of map that would show where this would be, remember, we haven't put a pin on the map yet, and so we haven't heard from neighbors across the street, we're building some, some, some nice things, and parents of students that live there, that would be treating the whole community's, um, affluent. Um, so while maybe we haven't heard, and all the information, we haven't heard all, all the pushback either. And I think we set a goal for, for getting this going, so that we can start one shopping for grants, can't shop for grants until we have a project, so I'd like to see move towards the twenty-eighth, with then, hopefully in June, um, making the decision if, if we can. But, part of what we had tonight was to get the feedback from the community, I can't quite see the yellow very well, but we can keep spinning our wheels here, we can, you know, take with what, what we know and make our best decision and move forward, and that's what I'd like to see happen by, um, by June, and so to do it all in one night, maybe isn't feasible, but to take the first step in May with the backup in June, probably would work.
Yeah, I think maybe it's time to have a meeting, just more discussions, we can get more information, we can get, uh, I think it would be a good thing, and more, if we can talk to Dunn, and at least get that information.
At least get that information, uh, it would help us.
I'm concerned about the Dunn School part, because one of the things we need to remember is if we do our own plant, you've got hiring employees, you've got training employees, you've got insuring employees, providing equipment, um, worker comp, retirement plans, all those things that come with that part, and the thing about solving that attracts my attention is, it's a package deal. And you don't have that liability, because it's borne by them, and they're, right, if you look out, go out and look now, to try to find people who are qualified to do this job, you're not gonna find many. And they're gonna come into a smaller place, and we're gonna train them, and they're gonna go off somewhere else, and then we're gonna start over again with somebody new, so I'm looking at the business side and the practicality of it, uh, I'd rather not have the liability and the responsibility for all that. I, I'm willing to go with whatever the community wants as far as the collection and, and the treatment, but I'm not inclined to support the idea of a local, uh, with Dunn, that's my particular feeling.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm, uh, uh, again, just echoing, if we can have a little more detail about, I think, certainly aren't gonna know all the deep, the, the specifics of what a Dunn solution would look at, but we could certainly probably get enough together, um, as Tom mentioned, a map where the, where the potential sighting could be, uh, we know we have the numbers from Floesina. Is that still feasible, is that the right size, oh, and then we probably could come up with a list of, you know, what are the issues or other concerns that impact, um, as Director Farren mentioned, um, you know, potential pushback from neighbors, parents, and there's also the whole issue of, of LAFCO, we, we really, we'd have to go back to them, and request that Dunn be considered or add to our district. That's, that's not without some extra work, so, I guess more of a, you know, what would it take if we were gonna go to Dunn, what would that look like, what do we, else do we need to know? And then could we have, if we have that, could have that discussion, and then look at the new meeting for the support to vote. As, um, one member of the public said, yeah, we, we really do need to get moving on this, we can, we can honestly analyze, uh, analysis paralysis this thing to death. And that's, I'm not gonna move this along any faster, but we do wanna be smart about the decision we make, um, on this one, so I'm definitely in support of the May twenty-eight meeting as well, just on this. Any, um, anyone else?
So, Madam Chair, if I could, um, two things, one, I, I've heard very clearly for staff, both council and myself, to do more research. Work with council particularly related to LAFCO and what may or may not have, happen there, I can go back to Dunn and get more information, I, I'm sure they can give me some things by May twenty-eighth, if nothing else, a map that shows the, the school. Just so you can continue to talk about it on the twenty-eighth, um, I will not have all the answers, I can tell you right now, that's way too short, but I'll get what I can, um. Uh, and more, you know, I, I heard a lot of support for May twenty-eighth, I would appreciate a motion from somebody to set a specific May twenty-eight.
There's three of you that are interested in more information from that, right?
Well, pretty much all of them said something at some level, yeah.
All of them that we have a meeting on May twenty-eighth specifically for this subject, without no other business.
I'll say.
We have a first and a second?
Comments on the motion?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, comments on the motion?
No.
His comments.
Um, and, and I'll be supporting that, uh, I would just, I wanted to add, as we're, you know, identifying some of these issue points, and I think council mentioned it in our workshop, very high level discussion about potential liability. We're moving untreated waste to a, someone else's property, and then trying to treat it, and then disposing it there, and so, um, you know, to the extent there's some ability to encapsulate liability issues of that versus, you know, solving, which is a working plan, but, yeah. Those are my comments, I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a first and a second, all in favor, aye, opposed, okay, we are set for May twenty-eighth.
I'll ask. Oh, do you mean tonight or then?
On May twenty-eighth.
I'll ask.
Okay, alright, next item on the agenda is the, is number eight, consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and setting up the budget here in day.
If I may, um, so, uh, this is the, the legal process you have to go through to adopt the budget, it's the next step. Um, I would specifically request that any motion be specific, such as my recommendation, and that include both setting the date and time for the hearing, as well as directing staff to publish the legal, uh, notices, so please include both of those in any motion, um. This is all related to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which is July one of twenty-five to June thirty, twenty-six. Um, there are two numbers that, uh, I need to still change in the draft budget, and I'll get that done before we come back for the hearing. Uh, the two numbers are, I've gotten, uh, a direct quote related to our insurance, I was using an, an anticipated number from them, and as you'll see when I do the, the, um, reporting later. Our balance on hand, the balance therefore, that we will carry forward into twenty-five, twenty- And as you'll see when I do the, the, um, reporting later, our balance on hand, the balance therefore that we will carry forward into twenty-five, twenty-six. Is gonna be a little higher, which is good, than anticipated. The two big drivers for that are a little extra property tax revenue, um, from the special tax. And the second one is, of course, that grant finally came through, and so that seventy-five thousand dollars, not seventy-five dollars, Director. Uh, seventy-five thousand dollars is in our bank account. So, uh.
Um, we'll have a public comment first. Budget, any, okay, nobody online, nobody in the room? Alright, bring it back to the board, if there are any comments, questions, so. Would somebody like to make a motion or remember, guys, something specific?
Yeah, almost that, recommendation to set a hearing, getting direct staff to publish notice.
I'll, I'll second that, with clarification, that's June eleventh, that's six P M. Okay, so second.
Yeah, alright, we have a first and a second. Uh, this is a roll call.
Director Palmer, Director Faram. Director Nelson.
Hi.
Director Parks.
President Kennedy.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hey, motion passes. Sorry, lost my agenda.
Reports.
So, so, any reports, okay. Next item on the agenda, subcommittee reports. Um, I'll lead off with the finance committee, we did meet finally, yay. Uh, so you'll see the product here in the packet, and other than that, there was, there's nothing else to report on on the finance committee. Director Nelson has anything? Okay. Uh, grant committee?
So we had a meeting last week. And let's see, so, you know, we are teed up to, once we do have a project description, to really. Hit the ground running on, uh, looking at grant options based on our project description we come up with. We do have free, um. Funding events coming up in May fifteenth, tomorrow's the State Water Resources Control Board, Environmental Package Guide, and so I'll be doing that one. Um, Director Faram is doing May twenty-ninth, the, the California Financing Coordinating Committee's Spring Funding Fair. And then also on the twenty-ninth, it's USDA grant webinar, which I. Now, it's, we're, we're getting to get ready to move. Yes. We, uh, met on project management. Now we have met, but we need to, we will after we have project description.
Okay, uh, moving on then to the next item, uh, General Manager and District Engineer comments.
Yeah, so our District Engineer isn't here, so he doesn't have any comments, that's good. Uh, my comments will be brief, uh, as I noted a minute ago. Um, if you look at the, the budget packet, um, our current cash balance is a little over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which. Is significantly higher than originally anticipated at this juncture. Um, just last month, it was in the, in the three hundred thousand, so that's. Sizable for us, a twenty, twenty-five percent jump. Uh, that will be reflected, again, before I post any notices related to the budget, I'll update that number as well as the other number. Um, all of these reports are included in the budget, um, things are, uh, uh, other than, higher than anticipated, uh. Revenue side, the expenses are tracking essentially where we expect.
Alright, terrific, thank you. Uh, that brings us to item ten. Okay, director comments, any comments from? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to our last item on the agenda, German, would somebody like to make a portion?
Move German at nine oh three, uh, could we include a wish for a happy birthday to. Our president and Director Palmer?
I'll say it all.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, with the German, all in favor. Alright, thank you all for, um, your time to see your sayings.
Hoop cakes in the back.